I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shavit.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is not.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to change the agenda. Mr. Gerlach?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to continue Agenda Item K4, Stafford Pond Ordinance Amendments, until our March 25 meeting.
We have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to move Items B and C to the front of the agenda in that order, and the consent agenda after that.
We have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Lambert?
I'd like to make a motion to substitute for K4, A, for discussion only, the status of the non-quit school.
We have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Okay, we'll begin with the public presentation. Bob Martin?
Good evening. Why I'm on the agenda is to hopefully plant the seed. The maintenance in this town, I think, you need to look at. I don't think we can continue to work with one full-time and one other man that's not even a part-timer, eighteen hours a week in the winter. The buildings are falling apart. The community center, that's a disgrace. It's disgusting. The roof has been leaking for years, and yet we keep cutting money, cutting money, cutting money. How are we going to operate? Some of the things that come to my mind, especially after these last couple of snowstorms, is, I guess we're going to be, and it's a guess, we're going to be inheriting the Essex Library. Maybe someday, it's supposed to be getting turned over to the town. That's going to be one more building to maintain. How about the new library? How are we going to maintain that library? Who's going to shovel the snow? Who's going to clean it and do all the other stuff, maintenance work that needs to be done? You just can't keep going with the few people that you have. That's about the seed I'm trying to plant. You keep cutting, 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 and guess what? I'm a firm believer that a little paint and putty today will save you thousands in the future. But if you don't paint and putty, then you're going to end up replacing, which is going to cost you a hell of a lot more money. That's where I'm at.
Thanks, Bob.
We begin with public presentations. Norman Benoit with Pastridge, Snow and Han, Bond Council of the Town. Resolution of Town Council of Tiverton, approving the financing of the acquisition, constructing, building, furnishing, and equipping of a public library, and to issue bonds and notes in an amount not to exceed seven million.
Would you like me to speak from here or the table?
You'd probably be more comfortable sitting there.
My name is Norman Benoit with Pastridge, Snow and Han, Bond Council of the Town. What you have before you is a resolution which would follow up on the referendum special election that was held in November of 2011, which authorized the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town, as noted, for the acquisition, construction, building, and furnishing and equipping of a public library in an amount not to exceed seven million dollars. The form of the resolution is in the customary form, as is normally done with the Town of Tiverton, which authorizes the Town Treasurer and the President of Council to set the final terms of the bonds. So what you would be doing here in Section 1 is authorizing those two officers to issue the bonds, to issue bond anticipation notes, if that makes sense, before doing the long-term bond issue. Section 3, they set the manner of sale, the maturities, the interest rate, and so forth, the details of the bonds. Section 4, you can contract for federal and state advances. Section 5, the monies in the Town Treasurer could advance monies, which would then be repaid, doesn't have to advance the monies. Section 6 authorizes the offering document if the bonds are sold to the public. Section 7 authorizes continuing disclosure, which is required now on a public sale of bond issues. Section 8 is language that would authorize those officers and direct them, actually, to make sure that the interest on the bonds continues to be tax exempt, so that action would not be taken to cause that to happen. And Section 9 permits reimbursement for capital expenditures incurred prior to the adoption of the resolution. Like I say, this is in the normal form that the town is typically operated under. If you have to answer any questions, any council members may have.
Any questions from the council?
I just had a quick question. Can you help me understand what bond anticipation notes are?
Those are short-term notes that would be issued in advance of a long-term bond issue. Now, the financial plan, it may make more sense to go out with the long-term bonds and just do it initially because the rates are pretty good. Depending on your construction schedule, sometimes it makes more sense to just, you know, you only need two million, the first year you borrow two million, you know, in chunks. So it gives the flexibility depending on the timing. So the notes are just the short-term, think of it as a bridge loan with the ultimate takeout of the long-term bond issue.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other discussion on this, I will entertain a motion regarding the resolution.
I move that we adopt the resolution as noted on Agenda Item B1, Resolution of Town Council of Tiverton, approving the financing of the acquisition, construction, building, furnishing and equipping of a public library, and to issue bonds and notes in an amount not to exceed seven million dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Benoit, again, you're here to discuss the possible of TIF bond refinancing. And I think to be in for the public, if you'll explain what the TIF bond is.
Sure. I was asked to look at whether it makes sense to look into potentially refinancing a tax increment bond. Little background, back in 2002, the town issued special obligation tax increment bonds for the village of Mount Hope Bay, which is the Starwood Development, I'm sure you're all familiar with. At that time, the money was used to put in a sewer line that went all the way up there to tie in. Tax increment financing bonds are not general obligations of the Town of Tiverton, so the town does not put its full faith and credit behind those bonds. The security for those bonds is the incremental increase in the taxes that were on that land before, which was minimal because it was, you know, pretty much vacant land, and what is pledged to pay them is the increase in taxes since then. So that's all that is securing these bonds. At that time, that was a relatively, relatively, I won't say risky, but it was, you had construction risk because who knew that, you know, the sewer line had to get constructed and hooked up? Starwood had to do whatever they were going to do to put in all the roads and all that other business, and then they had to sell the units and get them constructed and all that. So there was construction risk involved. Interest rates were higher back then. So what was sold back then was a 20-year bond, and the bond that is left today, the interest rate is 6.875 percent. Now, that's a tax exempt rate. So if you were to refund this, think of it as refinancing your home mortgage, there would be no extension in the maturity. There's ten years left to pay, we'd keep it at ten years. But what you would do is, if you can issue new bonds at a much lower rate, you're obviously going to save some money. So a 10-year tax exempt bond, I'm not a financial advisor, but, you know, it's, it seems to me that there's at least something here we're looking at to explore to see if monies can be saved. These bonds become callable, which means they can be prepaid. You know, on your home mortgage, you usually get prepaid any time. These bonds were sold with a 10-year lockout, so you couldn't call them for the first 10 years. So it's only coming up now where it would make some sense to actually prepay the bonds. The other things are, is, I'm told that there's very good coverage. So there's a coverage test that the increased taxes have to be at least 1.25 percent of the debt service on the bonds. I'm told that there's been good historical coverage. And what you have now is a lot of different homeowners that built out facilities. So this is really before you, I believe, simply as a financial advisor and other folks at the town level would like to have to go ahead to explore whether it makes sense to refund these. The only expense, the financial advisor only gets paid if a deal goes forward. We, I'd estimate, we probably spend, we usually get paid by the hour, so you probably look at $3,000 maximum to assist a financial advisor in preparing. The next steps would be a request for proposals. So what you probably would want to do as a next step, you'd do a request for, well, a financial advisor would do this, and might review it and have input, asking banks if they would like to buy a 10-year bond, and if so, what kind of interest rate would they offer. And obviously, if they came back with numbers that weren't compelling, you would end up doing nothing and not go forward. Just in order of magnitude, the state of Rhode Island, when they do these refunding bonds, they look for 3 percent present value savings is their threshold, and that's net-net after all costs and everything. So obviously, if the numbers came out less than that, you know, I wouldn't recommend you go less than the state would, but if you're over the threshold that the state would entertain such a refunding, you might want to consider it. So it'd be a question of looking at it, and then if, in fact, it made sense and there were good responses to that request for proposals, then we would draft the resolution actually authorizing refunding bonds and so forth. Happy to answer any questions.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we would need to spend somewhere in the vicinity of $3,000 to figure out the final numbers?
Yes.
Do we have any ballpark of what the potential savings are?
I'm not a financial advisor, so I don't speculate on interest rates, and that could change. You know, you could find out that, we can't do this instantly, it's going to take some time because you've got to prepare the offering document, well, the request for proposals and so forth. I don't, I wouldn't want to speculate on order of magnitude, but I would say that at 6.875, I mean, you're going to, you might be able to cut that substantially. But I, it's just not my area, and interest rates can change.
Right. And as Bond Council, have you done this in other towns, you know, gone out and?
We do refundings all the time. Tax increment financings are rare, actually, in the state of Rhode Island. There's only been maybe three or four done. Some have had refundings. What we're finding is that the era, it's mostly these bonds are sold with a 10-year call. The rates were much higher 10 years ago, so we're finding that there's a lot of refundings. So we do it all the time. Tax increment financing is a specialized type of bond issue. It's not a general obligation of the town. So it's a little, you're going to pay a higher rate than if the town were going out for a general obligation, but it doesn't make sense to make it a general obligation of the town. You know, you either refund it on the same basis in a way that makes economic sense or not.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Benoit.
Thank you.
Okay, non-advertised public hearing. The Town Council is sitting as a Charter Monitoring and Complaint Review Board. Charter violation complaint by Justin Katz against Town Clerk Nancy L. Mellow. At this time, I would like to introduce the Town Council's counsel, Mr. Matthew Oliverio Esquire. And at this time, I would ask Mr. Oliverio, just to give an overview of how the proceedings will go.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Matt Oliverio, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight representing the council, sitting as a Charter Monitoring and Complaint Review Board. As you know, your town charter has a very unique procedure by which any citizen who believes that a town official, appointee, employee has knowingly violated the charter, they have the opportunity to file a complaint with the town clerk under Section 1211 of the charter. And if the complaint is sufficiently set forth, which effectively the components of that complaint are outlined in the charter, it must specify the section or sections of the charter which are charged to have been violated, B, the nature of the violation, and C, the person, persons, or body charged with having committed the violation, then the clerk would schedule a hearing before this body, again, not sitting as a town council, but as the Charter Monitoring and Complaint Review Board. And then this body will, in a public hearing, receive evidence, testimonial, documentary evidence, from the complainant, in this case, Mr. Katz, and also from the person or persons charged with the violation, in this case, Ms. Mellow. So they have the opportunity to present evidence before this board. This board then weighs that evidence, and I would suggest to this board, since it's not specified in the charter, that it would be, the burden of proof is on the complainant, in this case, Mr. Katz, and the burden of proof is by a fair preponderance of the evidence, that's the civil standard. If this body, after conclusion of the evidence, makes a determination that there is sufficient evidence to support a claim of a knowing violation under the charter, they would take a vote, and the vote would have to be by two-thirds of this body for the complaint then to proceed to municipal court. And only the municipal court has jurisdiction to determine if there is a violation of the charter, and then it also, the charter specifies what penalty may be imposed, and that penalty could be as drastic as removal from office, or a fine of anywhere from zero to $300. Now, in this case, Mr. Katz filed a complaint on February 5, 2013, and in effect, he claims that Ms. Mellow knowingly violated the charter when she considered a complaint from a Ms. Cook that there was certain conduct by school department employees in using campaign material somehow influencing an election, which is prohibited under Section 1218 of your charter. And his complaint is that she violated her responsibilities when she investigated that complaint and had that complaint dismissed. So tonight, as I see it, subject to your input and review, and as I have suggested to council for Ms. Mellow, council for the school department, and Mr. Katz himself, the scope of this hearing is, should be limited to the complaint against Ms. Mellow and her conduct, and not the underlying Cook complaint. And so the inquiries should be limited to her conduct. I would suggest to this body that the parties, that is, Ms. Mellow and Mr. Katz, that they are responsible for presenting the evidence, and that they are permitted to present evidence, both in the form of perhaps a brief opening statement, and then it's incumbent upon Mr. Katz to present his evidence, either through himself or other witnesses that he may call. Those witnesses would be subject to cross-examination. And then Mr. Tights, on behalf of Ms. Mellow, would present his evidence, and his witnesses would be subject to cross-examination. What I think the body should not do is then open it up for public discussion, for the public to give their impressions, opinions. That's not what this is. It's the parties who are here for a public hearing, they are responsible for presenting the evidence. At the close of the evidence, then this body can deliberate in public and render a decision. So again, if you find, by a fair preponderance of the evidence, that there is sufficient evidence to support a finding of knowing violation, by two-thirds of this body, then the complaint is submitted within 10 days to the municipal court. If you find to the contrary, then the complaint goes no further. Any questions from any members of the review board?
I think that was it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Oliverio.
Certainly.
Excuse me. Mr. Tights?
Thank you. Mr. President, before we get started, may I just raise two procedural questions, if I may?
Yes.
The first one, I just want to confirm, well, first of all, for the record, I'm here representing Ms. Mellow in her role, official capacity as town clerk, because of the fact that I was involved in providing her with the advice in connection with this matter. So that's why you have Mr. Oliverio, who has no professional or financial connection with my firm, to provide you with independent counsel. Having gotten that on the record, I would just ask confirmation that the understanding of the two-thirds majority, you don't have partial people because it's more than four, two-thirds of seven is more than four, it needs five votes in the affirmative to move this on to the municipal court.
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, secondly, I'd just like to note for the record, and I don't think you have to deal with it now, but I want to get it out here now, that I had talked with attorneys for the school department about the availability of witnesses from the school department, and in fact, specifically discussed would they like me to request a subpoena to be here, and I was told by the attorneys that that would not be necessary. As indicated to me by correspondence received just today, the school department is not willing to voluntarily make its employees available for testimony, and so I reserve the right that I may want to ask that this body issue subpoenas for them and it be continued so that they would testify if they are not willing to testify tonight and it's so necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Katz.
The only other comment that I'd like to make, to the extent that anyone will be testifying, I think that should be sworn under oath.
Yes.
Well, I wanted to start with a couple of things. The first, related to sort of what Mr. Tights says. To whom should I hand it?
Yeah, and Mr. Katz, only because sometimes the microphones don't pick up, if you'll speak directly into the microphone.
And I would also just mark each, any document as an exhibit, so that the complainants' exhibits will be numeric, and the respondents' exhibits would be alphabet.
I would note, by the way, that out of all the documents I'm going to submit, at the bottom, I've added a page number, Katz v. Clerk, and that number is consistent throughout all of the documents I'll submit, so, if that helps at all.
And I think he should be sworn.
Yeah.
Sir Katz, you solemnly swear that the testimony about the given is proceeding shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Right.
May proceed.
As Mr. Tights says, this weekend, we just got.
Mr. Katz, I'm sorry, just, do you have more copies of this?
I have one for myself and one for the record. Some of the documents that I, just because it would have been a huge expense to print for everybody, the ones that I think everybody will need to look at, I've printed enough for the entire.
Well, those butt-fry deliberations, we should have this in front of us, so.
And may I, may I see what it is?
Yes, there's a copy also.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, let Mr. Tights say it first. Then make the copies.
All this is a, the email correspondence with Mr. Oliverio over the weekend, as well as a letter from the school department declining to participate. I just wanted to put that into record because, apart from disagreeing with some of Mr. Oliverio's assessments, I think we need to have rules established and voted on, either as a ruling from the chair or from the council, on specifically five points in this correspondence, that this is an evidentiary hearing with a civil standard by fair preponderance of the evidence. I go first because I've gotten burden of proof. All witnesses will be cross-examined. In his correspondence, he also says that you may, quote, revive Mrs. Cook's complaint to review on its merits and schedule a hearing at a later time, and that this is all subject to change pending your agreement, and that's the agreement I'm seeking as an official act, to agree with the rules that have been laid out. I have five additional ones to ask about.
We'll have to wait till we get the copy back.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Katz, that needs to be copied?
It depends how far and what ground we cover.
Because if you have anything that you're presenting to this hearing board, we should have it now.
No, just got to give them to me first.
Andy, you want to look at these first? I'm going to look at these before I copy them.
Just be aware that there's duplicates of each one already in there, so you don't need to copy both, obviously.
Okay.
And are you putting, is he marking them as exhibits?
Exhibit. Yep. Justin, you want this copy?
What's that?
You gave me two copies.
Yeah, one of them was going to be mine, and one was going to be evidence, so.
Only one of them.
Right, yeah, no need to double copy everything.
But to continue, we'll wait for Exhibit 1, five points that he.
You labeled Exhibit 3 and 4, there's both free, the copies. Five and six, you got two of each. This is three.
May I ask what capacity Mr. Tights is acting in at this moment?
I'm acting as counsel for Ms. Mellow, just that the exhibits are numbered incorrectly. You gave duplicates, so they've been accidentally numbered consecutively rather than duplicates. Maybe I, maybe they should just come in one at a time, and then we could deal with them one at a time.
Well, it's just the copies.
Well, just so that we don't have to wait, you know, once.
Well, I do intend on objecting to some of them too, so you might not be making copies.
Yeah, they're all marked for identification at this point.
Three.
Although the rules of evidence.
The five points that you made, I don't see that one.
Is there...
Mr. Katz? Yes.
Did you have a listing of five points?
Yep.
Are they printed here?
No, these are from, well, these are from Mr. Olivaria's email. So the initial step was to set the rules officially by some kind of voter ruling from the chair? Unless, are you currently reviewing those copies? Is that...
Yeah.
I don't know what rules he's referring to.
I think it's about the five, the five points, which are set aside in the charter, so no vote.
They're already in the, yeah, it's already defined in the charter with the, with the processes. I think I outlined that pretty clearly.
Well, I'm concerned, because the email from Mr. Olivaria said that this was all subject to your approval. I just want to make sure that it's clear that those points are all approved.
No, it's not, it's my advice to my client.
Right, no, what I'm saying is...
These are my preliminary thoughts, Mr. Katz. I want you so you could anticipate the process for tonight. And I've already outlined that. Okay? I think the chair of the board has agreed to proceed in that fashion.
Yes.
Has I outlined it? Is that correct?
Okay, so that's, that's effectively a ruling from the chair.
It, he has adopted the process that we're, under which we're going to proceed today.
Okay.
Okay? So you can give an opening statement, and you may present witnesses and documentary evidence, and your witnesses will be subject to cross-examination.
Okay.
And it's your burden to establish there was a knowing violation by Ms. Mello.
Okay. And is it still on a table that you're, you have the authority to, quote, revive Mrs. Cook's complaint?
That's preliminary thoughts of mine, that's up to this body. That's not mine, it, I'm not the decision-maker here, Mr. Katz.
I know, that's why I'm asking for rulings on the rules that you share.
No, you're not going to get a ruling on that until they hear the evidence.
We're only dealing with Ms. Mello.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's a question of authority, not of whether you want to do it or not. But I'm fine with not doing that one. The five, the other ones I wanted to ask about, you already answered, that witnesses are under oath.
Mm-hmm.
Does this body extend the authority to subpoena witnesses?
I think in any hearing, they have that inherent power to do that. They do.
Would depositions be appropriate for this hearing?
No.
And why is that?
Because you have your public hearing tonight, and if it needs to be continued to subpoena witnesses, they can do that. But it's not a civil case where you have a right to do discovery. It's not, there's no discovery process that's outlined in the charter. This is your opportunity to be heard.
But if, my understanding is it's pretty common, that if there's an evidentiary hearing where I have a civil standard by a preponderance of the evidence, that I have a right to...
This is a charter-based complaint, Mr. Katz. Charter does not provide for discovery mechanism like the rules of civil procedure in a civil case. This is your opportunity to be heard. That's my advice to my client.
Are you ready to begin, Mr. Katz?
Is that, are you going to agree with that, that there's no right to discovery?
No, as our counsel has stated.
And that's by a ruling of the chair?
Yes.
Okay. And will I have an opportunity for closing remarks after Mr. Tights's presentation?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Then he will have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Okay. That's expected. In this case, I, I'm of the opinion, and I think the letter from the school lawyer agrees with it indirectly, that these matters should be indefinitively settled well in advance of this hearing. So I request a continuance, so that both sides may prepare their cases in full knowledge of the rules.
There's a request for a continuance. That's up to you. I don't know if you want, Mr. Tights has an opportunity to address that motion.
Yes. Mr. President, we would object to a continuance. We had this scheduled out a while ago. If there was a reason to continue it, as I said, I still have a question about the school committee witnesses, and that may in fact come into place. But at this point, we certainly would like to get started and see what we can do. And if we could finish it tonight, certainly we will endeavor to do so.
I intend to be in agreement. We actually, my understanding is that you had asked for it to be delayed.
No, no, that was actually Mr. Tights.
Mr. Tights, you had asked for it to be delayed.
Right. At which point I communicated with Ms., oh, I'm sorry.
But that would have given you the opportunity to, so, it is my opinion, and if the rest of the hearing board agrees, is that we proceed.
Well, let me offer beforehand that, at that moment, I asked Mr. Olivaria his impression of the rules. He said he would get back to me. I heard from him on Friday, with some additional commentary on Saturday. So if we now have the rules of this hearing, that bears on the preparation for presenting evidence.
I also asked you to confer with your own counsel about the process, and that I was not your counsel, but I was counsel to the...
No, I understand that, but I anticipated some sense of the rules and perhaps an authoritative declaration of what they were from, from this body. And that came just now.
Well, it is stated and laid out in the charter.
Right.
So I believe that you've had sufficient time to prepare your case.
There's nothing in the charter that bears on discovery or subpoenas or depositions or...
Because it does not follow the same rules as a civil case, if I'm correct.
And what's the, what's the precedent for the charter, a charter claim, complaint being different?
If you read the charter, you have to have a hearing within 30 days.
Right.
So by its very condensed nature, there's no opportunity, you have to prepare your case within that 30 days. Okay? That means you have to talk with your witnesses, prepare your witnesses, present them at the hearing within 30 days. All the parties agreed, because of some scheduling issues, that we couldn't begin the hearing in 30 days. And all affected parties were in agreement that we could commence the hearing outside of the 30 days. So...
So you're saying that the 30 days timeline makes it something different than a standard civil hearing?
No, the charter, it's a charter-based complaint. It's, the procedures are outlined, and I have summarized them for this body and for the parties.
Okay, well, I'll pursue.
There's nothing really magical about it.
The next one, I actually have copies of. We just watched, well, hang on.
Can we deal with exhibit one before we go on to exhibit two?
No, those, I haven't technically submitted those. I gave them to you to make copies of them.
Well, once they're handed to the chair...
Well, that's, I'm asking, what, exhibit one and two aren't here, we're going right to something else that's...
No, this isn't part of my, my case. This is a preliminary argument, saying that it's inappropriate for Mr. Tights to be representing and sitting before this counsel. There's clear precedent in the ethics code, code of ethics for the state.
So you're...
I'm willing to hear what he has to say.
Let me just see if I can frame it, Mr. Katz. You, you now, your first motion to continue was denied, and now you have a motion to recuse Mr. Tights as counsel for Ms. Mello.
Well, I'm raising an objection.
Or disqualify.
I'm raising an objection.
Okay.
Mr. Tights advised the clerk with respect to the issue here. He advised the counsel with regard to its handling of Mrs. Mello's action. And more generally, Mr. Tights is a solicitor of the town council. He just stood up and walked around the desk to sit before the counsel as a lawyer. That makes him a business associate of this body, which, according to general law, 3614-5, no elected or appointed municipal official can represent somebody else before his employer or his business associate. In that packet is Ethics Commission Advisory Opinion 95108, which states that an appointed solicitor may not appear before a town council on behalf of another client. Ethics Commission Advisory Opinion 9871 says a town solicitor may not advise a town council on cases involving his business associate. And Ethics Commission Advisory Opinion 963 says a municipal judge may not hear a case in which a town solicitor, who is a business associate of his, has offered advice. In all of these, in that case, the parallel is this body instead of a municipal judge. So my initial reading is that each one of you should individually recuse from this case, and a town administrator should therefore file my complaint with the municipal court.
Do you want to be heard, Mr. Tights?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, I've just been presented with this, this is somewhat novel, but I would say that the fallacy is that it is not a business associate relationship. I am an appointed official of the town of Tiverton. And as I pointed out in the beginning, I'm representing Nancy Mello in her official capacity as the town clerk. I'm not here representing a private client. And if you look at these advisory opinions, that's where the first one, number 95108, whether the solicitor or other members of his firm may represent a private client before the town council. Next one I noticed was the same thing. Request an advisory opinion about representing the Nature Conservancy, where he was a member of the Nature Conservancy and sitting on its board of directors, which by definition makes him a business associate of the Nature Conservancy, not the town of Exeter. And the third one concerns the municipal court judge, and again, with his own firm. And I think that's clear. If, if somebody else from my law firm were sitting there, if someone else who, we had a business relationship like Mike or Sillow, were sitting in that seat, then I could, I certainly would agree. That's not appropriate, which is why the effort was made to provide Mr. Olivario, who's getting paid separately from the counsel, with nothing to do with me, so that there is in fact that independent representation. But there's nothing at all that prohibits me from carrying out my official duties here, which is representing the clerk as an official.
I agree with that interpretation, and I've, I've been involved in many similar situations in other municipalities. And I don't think there's any basis by which Mr. Tights should recuse himself or would otherwise be disqualified under the code of ethics. So to the extent that's a motion to disqualify Mr. Tights, my recommendation is that that motion be denied, and we proceed with the hearing.
Mr. Katz?
Do you happen to have the page that says Advisory Opinion 9933? I had, I made copies for everybody, but I don't have it now. I wouldn't think I might have mistakenly included it with...
No, it's not in the packet. Which number? 9933, right?
We only have one.
Mr. Katz, we don't seem to have it, but in, in all due respect, I believe that our counsel has advised us, saying that there is not a conflict. I believe that there is, so I'm going to deny your request.
And none of you are, okay. So none of you are going to recuse?
No.
Okay. Also, the, the next packet, which seems to have been misplaced in all this, but I can just read the precedent. I wanted to know if anybody on the council saw an authoritative opinion from the State Ethics Commission regarding whether affiliation with either Tiverton First or Tiverton Democratic Town Council Committee obligates you to recuse from this hearing. Under Advisory Opinion 9933, a member of a political group is a business associate of other members. And Advisory Opinion 2010, elected officials should ask, and that's actually from Tiverton about 10, 12 years ago, elected officials should ask the commission if political groups come up in municipal affairs. The basis for this question is that Mrs. Mello is a member of Tiverton Democrats, and Tiverton First is at the center of the controversy of this hearing.
I'm going to defer to counsel, but I'm going to make a statement first. Mr. Katz, we are here to hear your complaint against Mrs. Mello. Going regarding whether it's Tiverton First or the Democratic Party, in my opinion, has nothing to do with this. I don't believe anyone here would use that or be encumbered by that. So I am going to let counsel speak, but I'm telling you, I think you're going far afield.
I haven't, I don't have a copy of that advisory opinion. I tend to disagree with, with your analysis. And taken to its logical conclusion, assuming every member of this body has some affiliation with one group or another, you'd have no public body by which to pursue a charter complaint. So my recommendation is that we proceed with the hearing. And there's no basis upon which any member of this body need recuse him or herself.
Well, just to clarify, Advisory Opinion 2010, part of the recommendation from the Ethics Committee is that individual members of the Budget Committee should seek additional guidance from the commission if questions arise as to whether certain conduct constitutes a conflict of interest under the code of ethics. That was under, in order to say that you can serve on the committee, just ask us if something comes up. And that's why I'm asking whether anybody has submitted that request to the commission for clarification in this issue.
I don't believe they have, and I don't believe there's any obligation to do so in the context of this type of hearing. So I think we're ready to proceed with the evidence.
May I also just be heard on that aspect as well? I don't believe that's appropriate and applies either, because the Ethics Commission rules apply to these conflicts, to business associates, and, and the financial question. And there's no financial issue here. There's, this is purely a question of a charter violation. I'm not sure the Ethics Commission has any authority, but certainly their rules are not inclined to rule, to carry these issues. They're dealing with the question of business associates from that financial point of view. And as Ms. Olivaria pointed out, if you were to say simply because you were, had a political affiliation, in fact, then you would all have to resign, because the Tiverton Town Council is a nonpartisan body running in nonpartisan elections.
So, Mr. Katz, if you are ready to proceed, we are ready to hear you.
Well, just for the record, Advisory Opinion 2010 does say that being a member specifically, not, not just, say, a registered Democrat, but a member of the, a committee, or it does constitute a business association, just for the record. Lastly, I wanted to, as a preliminary matter, I wanted to ask for a bifurcated hearing. The first portion determining whether Mrs. Mello had the authority to conduct an investigation and judge a charter complaint... but I'm telling you, I think you're going far afield.
I haven't, I don't have a copy of that advisory opinion. I tend to disagree with your analysis. And taken to its logical conclusion, assuming every member of this body has some affiliation with one group or another, you'd have no public body by which to pursue a charter complaint. So my recommendation is that we proceed with the hearing, and there's no basis upon which any member of this body need recuse him or herself.
Well, just to clarify, Advisory Opinion 2010, part of the recommendation from the Ethics Committee is that individual members of the Budget Committee should seek additional guidance from the commission if questions arise as to whether certain conduct constitutes a conflict of interest under the Code of Ethics. That was under, in order to say that you can serve on the committee, you just ask us if something comes up, and that's why I'm asking whether anybody has submitted that request to the commission for clarification in this issue.
I don't believe they have, and I don't believe there's any obligation to do so in the context of this type of hearing. So I think we're ready to proceed with the evidence.
May I also just be heard on that aspect as well? I don't believe that's appropriate and applies either, because the Ethics Commission rules apply to these conflicts, to business associates, and the financial question. And there's no financial issue here. There's, this is purely a question of a charter violation. I'm not sure the Ethics Commission has any authority, but certainly their rules are not inclined to rule, to carry these issues. They're dealing with the question of business associates from that financial point of view. And as Ms. Oliverio pointed out, if you were to say simply because you were, had a political affiliation, in fact, then you would all have to resign, because the Tiverton Town Council is a nonpartisan body running in nonpartisan elections.
So, Mr. Katz, if you are ready to proceed, we are ready to hear you.
Well, just for the record, Advisory Opinion 2010 does say that being a member specifically, not just, say, a registered Democrat, but a member of a committee, or it does constitute business association, just for the record. Lastly, I wanted to, as a preliminary matter, I wanted to ask for a bifurcated hearing. The first portion determining whether Mrs. Mello had the authority to conduct an investigation and judge a charter complaint, the second being whether, if she does have that authority, whether she satisfied that requirement in this instance. Obviously, if the first one, if the municipal court rules that that's the first one, I'm correct. The second one is moot.
I don't think there's any basis to bifurcate anything. The issue before the Charter Review Board, or the Charter Complaint and Monitoring Review Board, is whether Ms. Mello knowingly violated the charter when she, in her handling of the Cook complaint. That's the issue. Let's hear it all in one evening. You don't need to make bifurcated rulings. It's very simple. Was there a knowing violation? Knowingly is defined as with knowledge, consciously, intelligently, willfully, intentionally. So there has to be an element of sienter, intent. That's the standard, and that's what you should consider.
Unless this board has any other discussion, I'm going to agree with our council and ask Mr. Katz if you'll please proceed.
Okay. I prepared a copy of the relevant section of the charter. Should I pass that out, or does everybody have copies already? All right. I want everybody to make no mistake that this is, in fact, a critically important issue for the good governance of this town. There's a line in George Orwell's novel, 1984, that freedom is the freedom to believe that two plus two equals four. At issue here is whether the words in Tiverton's Home Rule Charter mean what they say. That is, whether a resident can step forward intending to do something to help the town run efficiently and well, confident that legal wizardry isn't going to conjure some new procedure that leaves him or her with no due process. Mr. Tice has stated that the charter wouldn't give the clerk a role if she had no role, but in fact, the charter is very specific about her role. It, in fact, it was revised in 1999, and the people of Tiverton specifically removed the step that the clerk is claiming for herself, which is a finding of merit. Mr. Tice has argued that the media, in the media, that the fact that the charter offers detail actually makes it ambiguous, so that the clerk can take additional steps that are not actually mentioned in the charter at all. That's the sort of legal thinking, I believe, that will leave the people of Tiverton with absolutely no rights if followed through to its logical conclusion. So I ask you to forgive the level of detail I'm going to offer, but it's necessary, given that the plain meaning of the language is being ignored, so I have to prove something that ought to be obvious. The question in this case is, and is only, whether town clerk Nancy Mello followed the appropriate and established procedure for processing a charter complaint, or whether she fabricated a wholly new procedure that violated the due process rights of the person who made that complaint. The background of the complaint in question is that on October 29, 2012, just before the election, Tiverton resident and qualified elector Donna Cook filed a complaint, and it included all of the necessary elements. She is a qualified elector, and her letter is in the packet that was distributed earlier. She stated the section of the charter that was alleged to be violated. She stated the nature of the violation, and she stated against whom or what entity the complaint was being made. This is the clear requirement of the charter that it imposes on a person making a complaint. Sufficiently set forth is in quotations as a specific definition. In your packet are examples of just legal definitions in the Rhode Island general laws, and including ones where you can see the quotation marks are the convention for defining a word, even where there's no language such as this term shall mean. The charter, in this case, the charter uses the word specify. It doesn't say prove, argue, present evidence for. It says specify. In your packet also is a printout from dictionary.com, but it's consistent among printed dictionaries. Specify means to mention or name specifically or definitely, state in detail, give specific character to set forth as a specification, to name or state a condition. That's what specify means. I include in your packet as well samples from within the general laws, such as Chapter 46, 23, 7 dot 1. When somebody was putting forth a request for a hearing, it requests, it shall specify in detail the statements contested. That means just say what they are. It doesn't imply any sort of justification for the hearing. Also, I provided 1133-1, perjury, which shows a negative. If two sentences are in conflict, one of them has to be false. The person bringing a charge of perjury doesn't have to specify, need not specify which is false. They don't have to argue why one of them is or isn't. It's just specify, state what they are. So what should have been done with Mrs. Cook's complaint, according to the charter, the town clerk's job is to determine that the above information, the sufficiently set forth information was, in fact, included in the complaint, and to schedule a hearing. The process is fully in keeping with every other duty that the charter describes for the clerk, namely to check that documents are in order and make necessary arrangements. In the packet is a definition of clerk, which... A person employed as in an office to keep records, files, type, or perform other general office tasks. A person who keeps records and performs routine business of a court, legislator, or board. Not a member of a clergy, that's something else. Also, I provided a sample from the general laws of a clerk in the Superior Court clerk shall constantly attend the sittings, keep the seal, books, papers, collect and receive fines, et cetera. And thirdly, I included a list of the duties of the town clerk in Tiverton, excepting, setting her own budget, which is irrelevant here, within the charter. And none of them are anywhere near judging or finding merit. The very, the closest thing possible is under, on page 5 of that part of the packet, which is the non-clerical duties, the closest thing.
I still don't have, I've got Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and I don't think I have anything of what he's reading from. I don't know where it's coming from.
Yeah, I have some of the things. Do you have Exhibit 2? Some of that was attached to Exhibit 2.
Some of it with the dictionary stuff was, but now we're off to something else. That's why I'm...
On the bottom, I'm currently on Katz v. Clerk, page 34, if you look on the bottom.
I don't have those. That's what my point is. I have...
We got it, Andy. We got it. Can you hold on for a second, Mr. Katz, until we get the exhibits? Thank you.
This is in Exhibit 4.
Thank you. And then... At the risk of, at the risk of Mr. Katz indicating that I'm representing you again, which I'm not, but I understand that he's not a lawyer, but for the purpose of making the record, which is important to my client, could we ask that I just, if we could go through each of the exhibits, the number, and if we can refer to which pages they are? For example, Exhibit 1 being Katz, pages 1 through 3, well, I don't know, 1 through 2, plus a letter, and so forth. Then he can refer to what his pages are on the bottom, and at least we'll have a cross-reference of the various exhibits.
That sounds reasonable. Is that all right? Mr. Katz, if when you refer to a document, please identify it when you're reading from it, so that we can follow along.
All right. Well, I'll have to describe it by the first page, because mine aren't labeled by exhibit.
Right, but if Ms. Oliverio will just take a moment to read each one in now, then we'll have a record.
Do that, okay? So why don't you mark them as I read them?
Okay.
So your Exhibit 1 is the 3913 email chain between myself, you, and the other two attorneys, along with Mr. Robinson's letter of March 11, 2013. Exhibit 2 is the Donna Cook letter dated October 29, 2012, to Nancy Mello, along with a copy of the Code of Ethics section you cited, 3614-2, definition of specify, and a reference to Coastal Resources Management Council as it uses that term, and the perjury, general laws as it uses that term. Exhibit 3...
That was, that was part of Exhibit 2 as well?
That was all Exhibit 2.
Okay.
Exhibit 3 starts with a charter violation notice dated September 5, 2002, and it has a letter, a memo from Hannibal Costa dated September 10, 2002.
And that's Exhibit 3?
No, this is all 3, yes. It has a letter from Tracy Connors dated April 8, 2004, a letter from the town clerk, or a memo, April 13, 2004, a letter, five-page letter to the town clerk from Deborah Polish dated August 10, 2004, a memo from the town clerk dated August 11, 2004, a memo from the town clerk dated August 16, 2004, and a letter from Michael Burke dated January 8, 2011, and a letter from the town clerk dated January 14, 2011 regarding a charter violation complaint. That's 3. 4 is the definition, starts with the definition of clerk, referencing the clerk's general powers under Rhode Island general laws, and certain provisions of, I believe it's the charter.
Yes. Those are all the highlighted sections of the clerk's authority.
Yep, and that's Exhibit 4. Exhibit 5 is the memo from the town administrator forwarding your complaint on February 11, 2013, with copies of the relevant charter provisions. And Exhibit 6, Tiverton First, Tiverton Proud, appears to be minutes from a town council meeting of November 26, 2012, as well as some email communications, and a letter from Nancy Mello dated November 19, 2012. That's what we have right now. So if you reference any of those, Mr. Katz, can you reference the exhibit number?
Yeah, as I enter each exhibit, I'll, I'll reference it.
Thank you.
So I'm currently on Exhibit 4, starting on what's at the bottom, Katz, Clerk 35. These are just the duties of the clerk in the charter, showing that all of them are indeed clerical. None of them involve any sorts of investigations or judgments of merit. And that should conclude that exhibit. Well, actually, if you note specifically on, well, now I've already gone over that, where the clerk does have one duty to verify signatures without implying any sorts of judgment of the merit of the complaint being signed for. Now, as to prior practice on charter complaints, that's Exhibit number 3. These are all the charter complaints that have been filed, and the clerk's letters following them after the 1999 change of the charter. There are four prior to Mrs. Mello's election as clerk, and there's one that was ultimately withdrawn by Mr. Burke, that, for which the clerk wrote the memo to put it on the agenda. You'll note that there's some variation in the amount of detail included in a letter. Some of them are very detailed, particularly the one by Mrs. Polish and Eppke. Others are very simple, state the three things that need to be specified in a complaint. And you'll also note that not a single one, and this is before or after the change of the charter in 1999, not a single charter complaint in Tiverton that I could find has ever been dismissed by the clerk, particularly after 1999. Hannibal Costa was the previous clerk, and his action, he had four of them. His action was always the same. In fact, he included in each one the instructions. If you look, for example, on Katz v. Clerk 23, he says, "Charter Section 1211 directs that the town clerk review the complaint to determine whether or not the charges are sufficiently set forth, i.e. that the sections of the charter which are charged to have been violated are identified, the nature of the violation is stated, and the persons persons or body charged with having committed the violation are identified. I find," this is Mr. Costa, "that the complaint is sufficiently set forth," semicolon, "that the appropriate charter requirements for filing a complaint have been met." That's the extent of it, and I think that agrees with my previously stated view, that this is just to verify essentially that the form has been filled out correctly before forwarding it to the council. Ie in that paragraph means literally that is. In other words, it's not an interpretation, but a restatement. There's no reference to investigations or evidence of any kind in any of these letters. If you look, in fact, at the letter from Hannibal Costa on August 11, 2004, he forwards a videotape, a recording, without any statement of considering it evidence. He's forwarding it because it was included. He's not considering what it was. And as it turns out, it's actually not numbered, but I believe it's the last letter in this packet. When Mrs. Mello processed Mr. Burke's complaint, she copied and pasted this section verbatim into her letter forwarding his complaint. In other, in other words, implicitly agreeing with that as the process. This is the way it's always been done in Tiverton, after it was changed in 1999. Mrs. Mello's new process more closely resembles the way the charter complaints were handled before the charter was changed in 1999. This is Exhibit 5. I put the, Mr. Goncalo's letter forwarding my complaint on here, because I noted that he said in the final paragraph that, well, he says in here that he finds that... He finds that it has, that my complaint has merit. That's, that's good of him, but it's not necessary, and he wasn't authorized by the charter to offer any opinion on that. If you look at, in that same packet, behind that is a copy of the charter as it was prior to 1999. It included the Section A, Complaints by Citizens, and a Section B, Action by the Town. And in the middle of that paragraph, Action by the Town, it says that "If the Review Board or Town Administrator fails to find merit in the charges, it shall so notify the complainant. If by unanimous vote the Review Board finds merit in the charges, it shall, within 30 days of the date on which they were filed with the town clerk, schedule a public hearing to receive testimony from the complainant and from the official, board, or commission, or the members of the official board against whom, et cetera." In other words, there was a step where they found merit, and then they had a hearing. They had this hearing second. So when you look through the meeting minutes in the 90s, you see things like, and it has to be unanimous, so you'll see things like somebody files a complaint, and one town council member will vote no, which makes it go away. Then following meeting, somebody else will come up and file a complaint that that person voted at all with no justification, just filing a complaint, so they would have to say no. So that was the process before. The people of Tiverton didn't like it, and they changed it in 1999. The people of Tiverton didn't like it, and they changed it in 1999. They could easily, had the intention been to give the clerk that authority to find merit, they could easily have changed that, where that word merit occurred in the charter. Instead, they added the sufficiently set forth step, which is in a separate section. Before, we were talking about section B, Action by the Town. Tiverton moved it to section A, which is Complaints by the Citizen, Complaints by Citizens. And that's consistent with the idea that it was a clerical duty to process with a light screening so that people couldn't just sit there and say, "I'm sure they did something wrong, here's my complaint." They had to at least enunciate, and the clerk had to confirm that it was enunciated before saying it on and wasting everybody's time. So in this case, what the clerk actually did, this is exhibit six. Upon receiving the complaint, Mrs. Mello went to Fort Barton School, and she actually found substantiating evidence, and this is a photocopy of one of the pins that she found there, well, a similar pin that was retrieved from the school a week or two earlier. And that's also mentioned in her, the transcript from the meeting at which she spoke to you in your capacity as the town council. She describes finding the pin and telling the clerk that it was, the secretary at that school, that it was a violation. And after that, she, that's irrelevant to this, after that, she continued the investigation to Pecassett School, where she spoke with the superintendent who said that if there were any pins, they would be removed, or buttons, rather. Furthermore, she ignored leads that I provided her, having read about her investigation. My email is included in that as Katz v. Clerk 64. You'll note that it's addressed to Mrs. Mello at her official address, and that she replied from the same email address, noting that there was evidence of pins and other buttons in other schools, and that there was, in fact, somebody who had collected one and made a recording of it. The clerk then dismissed, oh, one other recent addition to this exhibit, today was forwarded to me, the principal of Fort Barton School has a statement that Mrs. Mello brought the button into her office, they discussed that it was indeed a charter, that it was a violation to be, to have it there, and that's what that letter says. So the clerk dismissed that complaint, and that's the final letter in this exhibit. As she describes, not only did she conduct the investigation, but she found evidence that Mrs. Cook's complaint was correct, and she acknowledged that it was a violation. That's in the transcript. She went beyond that, and in her dismissal began offering legal analysis of the charter. She also offers conflicting rationale, relying in the letter whether the action was knowing, which she would clearly have discovered it was had she followed the lead that I provided her. But by the time she related this process to you, she said that the reasoning was that it did not rise to the level standard, which is not in the charter nor in her capacity as clerk to determine. If Mrs. Mello's dismissal was a statement that the complaint was not sufficiently set forth, it would have described what Mrs. Cook had to fix in order to make her complaint sufficiently set forth. So the clerk then scheduled the announcement to you as a town council, just to let you know what she had done. This transcript is in this exhibit. At that meeting, she said she had judged the complaint on its merits and dismissed it because it did not rise to the level. You, sitting as town council, asserted that you had no authority to review the clerk's ruling. Mr. Tights, clerk's counsel here, advised you as your solicitor in that regard, and said he agreed you had no authority to do anything at that point. To the extent that such an assertion was justified, it was only because the clerk was operating entirely outside of the process laid out in the charter. There's no reason it would grant you authority to overrule a judgment that never should have been made. And this leaves, regretfully for me, this leaves no alternative other than my complaint against the clerk. There's no process of appeal because what was done was never supposed to be done. I much would have preferred some other mechanism to correct this legal problem. And that problem is that the precedent that the clerk's action had set creates an unacceptable situation. Charter complaints are the only mechanism other than our periodic elections for residents to enforce the charter by which the town of Tiverton conducts its business. Clerks, if this precedent stands, will be authorized to dismiss charter complaints based entirely on their own judgment, even when they find evidence, based on whatever degree of investigation they choose to conduct. There's no process of appeal to another body with more explicit authority, and there's no presumption of any legal knowledge on the clerk's part. The possible exception that Mrs. Mello stated and with which you as a town council agreed at that meeting would be if the first person filing the complaint continued to bring evidence to the clerk until he or she determined that it was enough, which is clearly overly burdensome and violates the language of the charter which says evidence comes to this hearing. Nowhere in the charter does it call for the complainant to do so. In fact, the only mention of evidence, as I said, is before you acting in your present capacity. And as you can see, that step is in a different section of the charter under Action by the Town. Mrs. Mello's invented process will be the process that is in place if you decide to dismiss my charter complaint. And whatever your view of Mrs. Cook's complaint, this will apply to all complaints moving forward. So it is eminently clear that the town clerk, Nancy Mello, failed to follow the procedure described in Section 1211A1, second one, they're not numbered sequentially. Furthermore, I argue that that omission was knowing as required in Charter Section 1211A2. And this one, I had enough copies.
Would be, yes, seven.
There's one I got late, so it's not.
Thanks.
Excuse me, Maya. In this packet is some precedent legally about what knowing means in a legal context. Now, even if I, Mr. Olivero has stated six or seven times now, knowing violation. Even if I agreed with that interpretation, which I don't, of a necessary degree of knowledge, I would argue that the clerk's action was, even in that circumstance, sufficiently knowing. If you look in the packet under Carmody versus the Rhode Island Conflict of Interest Commission, the State Supreme Court stated that a person cannot chart a course which turns out to be wrong in order to prove that they were, they didn't know. In this case, the plain language of the charter, precedent from prior complaints, the statutory history, the statutory revisions of Section 1211 are so clear that a sloppy rubber stamp from the solicitor is inadequate to stop the clerk's action from being knowing. Either neither of them did sufficient research, or one of them is ignoring the results. And at no point previously has any of them referred to any kind of look at the precedent or anything other than a reinterpretation, which one of these calls off-the-cuff opinion. And there's precedent for this reasoning. A lot of it, given its nature, is in copyright law. But if you look in here under, that's not numbered, Reed versus Portek, on the second page of my copy of that, it's actually willfulness in this case, knowing applies as well, says, "Those cases where willful infringement is found despite the presence of an opinion of counsel generally involving situations where opinion of counsel is either ignored or found to be incompetent. This precedent does not mean that a client must itself, himself or herself, be able to evaluate the legal competence of its attorney's advice to avoid a finding of willfulness. The client would not need the attorney's advice at all in that event. That an opinion is incompetent must be shown by objective evidence. For example, an attorney may not have looked into the necessary facts, and thus there would be no foundation for his opinion. A written opinion may be incompetent on its face by reason of its containing merely conclusory statements without discussion of facts or obviously presenting only superficial or off-the-cuff analysis." I would argue that the result in this case is evidence of the term incompetence in its legal sense. Indeed, if Mrs. Mello will waive attorney-client privilege in this case and provide all written correspondence, and if both Mrs. Mello and Mr. Tights would offer, well, depositions, we've said are not admissible, as to their research and conversations, then we could answer the question more thoroughly. But the fact of the matter is that I don't think it's necessary to do that, because I don't agree with Mr. Olivero's interpretation of the knowingly phrase in the charter. If you look under State v. Contreras, which is the next precedent in that packet, it says meanings will often, meanings of knowingly and willfully, will often vary depending on the context in which used or the offense charged. And because, as I said, this seems to me plain English, and it hasn't been followed, I included, if you'll recall, from, I don't know, I haven't seen anybody else actually learned it, but the sentence diagramming from high school or middle school. Sentence one is the clause in question here, knowingly in violation of the charter. If you'll observe that the verb is has taken, that is what is knowingly. The volition is having done the act, not having known that it was in violation. The phrase of violation is actually a separate branch. So has taken can be knowingly or in violation of the charter, or both. That's what the grammar means, that's the plain English. The next page.
Objection. At this point, I've been not objecting to any of the other exhibits. I know it's not the strict rules of evidence, but without the foundation of an English professor here, I would object to these sentence diagrams even being admitted for identification or being admitted for consideration by the council. I don't have a problem with case law, I don't think it applies, but they're court cases or a very old conflict of interest commission which doesn't even exist anymore, that's fine, but not the sentence diagrams.
Oh, this is merely a way of illustrating.
Hold on, there's an objection. I think Mr. Katz is trying to make a point about how this body should construe the term in the context of this hearing, knowing, so he's just giving his interpretation. I think it's perfectly acceptable and admissible. I allow him to continue, but kind of move it along. But that would be my recommendation to the chair.
Okay, continue, but, you know, a sentence is a sentence is a sentence. It's your interpretation, you may interpret it differently. We understand what you're trying to say, I don't think you need to delve into it anymore.
Well, my point is that it's not specifically speaking subject to interpretation. It's a grammatical function, and statutory language is supposed to be read first of the plain meaning of the words. We have to have a basis so that lawyers, solicitors can't wave a magic wand, say ambiguity, tap a document, and suddenly it means whatever they want. In this case, we have a process that is not laid out anywhere in the charter. In fact, the charter, to me, clearly lays out other standards of where evidence is presented and what each person's duty is supposed to do. I'm just illustrating here that this is the case.
You made your point, Mr. Katz, move on.
Okay, the second sentence shows you an example from, simplified from the general law, that shows knowingly makes, it shows the false claims is all in line. That's what they know they're doing. Now, here's the most important one of these. This comes actually from another section of Section 1211 under D, which is the penalties. In this case, the sentence reads that every official authorizing such payment or any portion thereof, knowing the same to be in violation, shall be jointly and severally liable to the town for the full amount. So what you have here is somebody who has been found by the municipal court of being in violation of the charter, the court is now assessing the penalties, as Mr. Olivero said earlier, that's $300 fine, potentially loss of job. There's also another provision in there that says that if they knew they were violating the charter, when they violated it, they are liable for any cost to the town. So if you'll imagine, if, this is purely hypothetical, if you'll imagine that Mrs. Mello had taken a taxi cab around to the schools and charged the town for the fare, if she was found in violation for violating the charter for conducting the investigation, if she didn't know it was a violation, she wouldn't have to pay that fare back. If she does know it's a violation, she does. So clearly, the logic internally of this one section of the charter envisions logically that somebody can be in violation without knowing it. That's because the volition is on the act, not on the law. And the rest are my remarks, if I'm assured that I get closing, a closing statement, I'll yield.
So Mr. Tights has the opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Katz, because he's representing himself.
Right, Mr. Tights.
Thank you. And Mr. Katz, we're not presenting any more witnesses. Eddie Wildwood is the other. Mr. Katz, did you do these sentence diagrams yourself?
Well, I did, but it was difficult to do them neatly on a computer, so I found a website that automatically does it, and it confirmed what I had suggested. I'm professionally a writer, I've taught English courses, I have a bachelor's in English.
And you were able to do the research on yourself as well with the cases, or you had legal assistance?
I researched all the cases myself and found the references. As you see, they're from a variety of websites, some of them are just you Google search a term.
Thank you.
That's it.
I'd like to introduce as an exhibit, it's actually one of the things that Mr. Katz has, part of one of his exhibits, but if I could introduce it as a separate exhibit, I think it would be easier, so I guess this would be.
Respondents A. Respondents A.
Should be eight. Maybe not. Should be eight. If you don't mind, I'm going to sit just so that I can get to the mic. Mr. Katz, showing you this memo is, you've already submitted that this is a copy of an email exchange between you and Mrs. Mello, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it correct? Is there anything factually, is this a true copy of the email exchange?
It appears to be.
Okay. And so directing, first of all, to the very top of it, this is from you, "Good luck to you as well," is that what you said to Mrs. Mello?
Regarding the election, yes.
Yes, okay. Now, the next.
And I voted for her at that election.
If you could just answer the questions, I'm sure we're happy to hear that, but, "Not knowing the process of the investigation, I just wanted to let you know what I know." So is it fair to say then, on November 5th, you thought that you should be doing an investigation?
I had no opinion on it, I had not researched the charter at that point. I assumed if Mrs. Mello was doing something, it was in accordance with her job.
Okay.
That was incorrect.
Now, going down to November 5th, at the bottom of the, this is your email to her, November 5th, 2012, at 7:11 PM. "Hello, Nancy. I just read the Patch article about the Tiverton First pins at Fort Barton, so I'm not sure how accurate the information is, but there's more to the story than has been reported. There were at least three buttons there, and they were in plain sight. The only reason there was just one there when you went was that David Nelson went to the school in the afternoon and took two of them. He has a recording of his conversation when he arrived. We also received reports that there were buttons at Ranger, but we weren't able to persuade any parents to come forward, parentheses for obvious reasons, close parenthesis. Justin." Now, asking you first about, there's more to the story that has been reported. You knew about this before you read the story? Did you?
Knew about the buttons?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You say there were at least three buttons there, and they were in plain sight. How did you know that?
Because, as I stated, David Nelson went to the school and collected two of them, and there was another one there.
How did you know that David Nelson went there and collected two of them? Did David Nelson tell you that?
Yes, he did.
And did you ask David Nelson to go forward and give this information to Nancy Mello?
Not at that time, no.
Did you at a later time, prior to the dismissal of Ms. Cook's complaint, go to Mr. Nelson and ask him to provide the information to Mrs. Mello?
I did not, because the charter never reached the point at which evidence is admitted. Or it's supposed to. It's supposed to come to a hearing where evidence is admitted. That would have been the appropriate time for Mr. Nelson to come forward.
But you knew Mrs. Mello was conducting an investigation, and you were actually giving her more information for investigation, and you didn't suggest to Mr. Nelson that he should come forward with what evidence he had?
Well, knowing and trusting in the character of Mrs. Mello, I anticipated that she would conduct the full investigation and follow the lead that I had provided.
And perhaps you trusted in the character of Mr. Nelson, too, that if he had appropriate information that was relevant to a charter violation, he would certainly come forward with that information?
Yes, and he intended to, at the hearing, to present evidence.
But he didn't provide it at any time before then?
Why would he? The hearing for evidence hadn't happened yet.
And did he speak up at the hearing?
There was no hearing, because Mrs. Mello dismissed it.
And did he speak up at the public meeting that Mrs. Mello dismissed it?
There was no reason to. It was already dismissed.
I see. Then there's no reason for your complaint now, by the same rationale. If there was no reason now, then why now? Let's talk about-
That's logically intangible.
We also received reports that there were buttons at Ranger. Who's "we"?
Myself and Mr. Nelson, and probably some other people. I don't remember.
What other people? Is this an organized group?
No, just people discussing how things happen in our town.
Okay. And you tell Mrs. Mello on November 5th that you weren't able to persuade any parents to come forward for obvious reasons, but yet you expected Mrs. Mello to get people to come forward when you couldn't?
Well, yes, because I gave her a name and told her what that person had.
Mr. Nelson was the name, a counselor who was already involved and who had awareness of this complaint. But you expected her to go find names that you weren't able to get?
I had no role in her investigation or in that complaint.
Did you know the names of the people at Ranger who knew about it?
I did.
Did you provide those names to Mrs. Mello, other than Mr. Nelson?
No, at their request, I did not. I told her they were at Ranger, so she could go there and discover them herself if the investigation was proper, which it was not, upon further review of the-
So she could go and ask everyone at Ranger? You had the information-
No, I told her they were located on the desk at Ranger, or that they were at Ranger, similarly to Fort Barton. They would have been obvious just as they were at Fort Barton. She went there and found one.
And do you know if Ms. Nelson went there and saw them?
Who are we talking about? Mr. Nelson or Mrs. Mello?
Both. Let's start with Mr. Nelson. Do you know if Mr. Nelson went to Ranger?
He did not.
Okay. Do you know if Mr. Nelson went to Fort Barton?
Yes, I've already stated that.
Okay. And do you know how long the pins were there at Ranger when they were gone, when they were removed? Do you know if the pins were there when Mrs. Mello went there?
She never went to Ranger. She went to Pecasa instead.
I'm going to ask the audience to please not comment or make any noise during the hearing.
Mr. Katz, did you listen to this recording that Mr. Nelson has?
I did.
And yet, you took no action to get it to Mrs. Mello?
It wasn't my duty to do the investigation. I did take action. I sent her a note to tell her where she could get it.
Okay. Well, Mr. Katz, you read all the exhibits you submitted, correct?
Yes.
Including your transcript of the November 26 meeting of the town council, correct?
Yes, I transcribed it. It took quite a while.
Right. And you've seen the minutes of that meeting as well?
No, I haven't.
Were you there?
Actually, yes, I did. I was there. I filmed it. I skimmed the minutes. I didn't think it was important to go much more detail.
Okay. If I could introduce as Exhibit B a copy of the minutes from the November 26, 2000, actually, it says 11/26/13 at the top. It's actually 12. 11/26/12.
May I just interject? Is there any objection to the admission of the complainants' exhibits in full, Mr. Tights?
Yes.
Because we've been referring to them, and the council has them before them, and as I said, the rules of evidence will be applied loosely in this proceeding.
I understand that. I still do have objections to a few of them that I'd like noted for the record. I don't know if you want me to do that now?
Well, maybe we'll wait till after your-
Yeah, if I could finish the cross-examination, then I'd be happy to deal with it. While the council's passing around B, let me just ask one more question regarding this tape of Mr. Nelson's. Was it an audio tape only, or was it video and audio? Or was it video only? What kind of tape was it?
It's video, but through most of it, only the audio offers any information. The video isn't clear.
The video isn't clear?
The video portion, but the audio portion you can hear.
I see. So is it, like, taken from a pocket or something? Are you watching the inside of a pocket? Is that what the video was?
I think it was a phone in his hand.
I see. And do you know if Mr. Nelson made known to the other parties of the conversation that he was recording it?
I don't recall.
You don't recall, or you don't know?
I don't recall. I don't know the difference between recall and no. I don't know, because I don't recall, whether he said that or not.
Looking to Exhibit B, what's labeled as Page 7 of 10, the second page of the exhibit, the first full paragraph, down in the middle, Solicitor Tights noted this was not summarily dismissed. If you have other evidence, then you can refile with further evidence. And then, actually, you were the next speaker there. Justin Katz questioned the charter on sufficiently set forth. So do you remember that, that Mrs. Cook was offered the opportunity to refile with further evidence?
Yes, I've already stated that that's not an offer that should have been made under the charter.
I see. But even after that, Mr. Nelson didn't come forth with any more evidence, did he?
He did not.
And you didn't come forth with any more evidence. You just came forward with a new complaint.
Because the more important issue at this point is the proper conduct of the town clerk in this matter. As we've already discussed, this is not about the button investigation.
But if you consider this so important than the investigation, I just want to make clear, even, you did hear that offer to come forward with more information, and you didn't come forward, and Mr. Nelson didn't come forward, and do you know if any further information has been provided to Mrs. Mello since that November 26, 2012 date?
There has not yet, and that is not relevant to this charter complaint. There may yet be, if this charter complaint fails.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Does counsel have any questions of Mr. Katz?
Any questions? I'm only just going to ask just a question, and sort of what Mr. Tights was saying. This came before us, whatever the decision was made, was made. I don't understand, if you had further information, why you did not bring that forward?
Well, if you refer to the transcript of that meeting, you all had made it very clear that you did not think you had authority to overrule Mrs. Mello. Mr. Tights, as your solicitor, confirmed that. As I've stated at that meeting, as I'm stating now, my concern is the integrity of the charter. I said, I think it's a direct quote from that meeting, "To me, the buttons are a small matter. To me, much more important is that a town clerk in the future cannot just dismiss complaints with no process of appeal or overrule or anything." And that's what I'm trying to correct here.
If no one else has any other questions, let me just ask Mr. Katz, do you have any objection to the submission of A and B as full exhibits? Okay, so they come in as full exhibits, and then I think Mr. Tights wanted to address some of the complainants' exhibits.
Sure.
We'll hear you on that.
Okay. I have no objection to Exhibit 1.
So that's full?
I have no objection to Exhibit 2 as an exhibit. Obviously, I don't agree with the characterizations therein, but just as an exhibit, I don't object to Exhibit 2. I do object to Exhibit 3, which is the previous charter violations. I don't think that just because it's the way we've always done it is a legal standard. I don't think it's relevant. As far as these other violations, I object to them on relevancy grounds.
May I redirect?
Go ahead.
How could the precedent, in fact, if you look at the transcript, at that meeting, Counselor Chabot asked for essentially this packet, because these things set up, asked the clerk for a packet, these things set up a precedent. They have to be relevant, because this is the process. If they aren't relevant, then I would argue that that's further evidence that it was a knowing violation, carelessly not reviewing the old precedents to figure out what the charter means and what has been done in the past, in fact, by Mrs. Mello herself.
And I would just say, if I could just add one thing, the clerk is an elected official, so this clerk is not bound by the decisions of previous clerks in any way. I guess I would withdraw my objection to the last part of Exhibit 3, which deal with the complaints by Michael Burke and the response there, too, since that was by this clerk. But I would maintain the objection to the other responses from the previous elected clerk, Hannibal Costa. Not that I don't respect him, but I don't think they're binding at all at precedence on this particular clerk. I don't even think her previous decisions are binding on her, but I am willing to concede that they could be considered.
Maybe I can address that for the counsel. I would admit them as full exhibits. Part of the complainant's argument, or the thrust of his argument, is this is a matter of interpretation, and this clerk and prior clerks have faced the same language under the charter, and it is relevant as to how one interprets those provisions, and also it provides some relevant evidence as to whether or not, if there was a violation, whether it was a knowing violation. And I think, although not conclusive, and I agree with Mr. Tights, that it's not binding, I think it is probative, and so you give it whatever weight you deem appropriate, but I think it's admissible, so I would offer that it be admitted as a full exhibit. But that's up to the counsel. That's my advice.
Mal, for one more word?
Before, as the hearing board, if you will agree, will allow it to be kept in as an exhibit?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll keep them as an active-
So 3 is full?
Yep.
Okay.
I have no objection to 4.
Full.
I have no objection to 5. I just want to clarify, though, make sure for the record, Mr. Katz, the charter excerpt, which is the second and third page of Exhibit 5, Katz v. Clerk 52 and 53, this is the charter that was in effect in 1999?
No, no. This is the one-
Prior to 1999?
1994, a copy of the 1994 charter.
Okay. This is the language that was in the charter immediately regarding Section 1211, immediately prior to the current language? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. With that clarification, I have no objection.
And I would further say that during that meeting, well, presumably when he advised Mrs. Mello, and at the meeting where he advised you about that case, Mr. Tights offered hypotheticals. If the people who wrote the charter wanted what I was saying to be accurate, they would have done X. I'm showing you that, in fact, X was kind of in there already, and they changed it to what I was saying.
And I'll be showing you that it's exactly the opposite. X is X. It's right here. It's all there. But let's go on with the exhibits. Exhibit 6, I have no objection, nor Exhibit 7. Obviously, I can test the relevancy, but not as exhibits at this point. And I guess I also don't object to that first section from the Code of Ethics that was submitted with the motion to disqualify. That wasn't marked as an exhibit, but I don't object to it, it just being a copy of the statute.
You want that marked as 8, Mr. Chair?
Maybe 8.
Okay. So complainants' exhibits 1 through 8 are full, and respondents A and B are full exhibits. Thank you.
Mr. Tights, you have nothing further? Not on the exhibits. Now, I'd like to present my case, if I could make a brief opening statement.
Mr. Katz? If you want to be comfortable, if you want to move a chair up or whatever.
I'm comfortable.
Okay. And I'd be more comfortable standing, but I understand the needs of the microphone.
If you want to switch.
We're okay.
Okay.
There are two issues here. One is the language of the charter, and I would submit that anything that needs three pages of sentence diagramming to explain it certainly isn't simple and self-evident. As I did say back in November, that if the citizens of Tiberton wanted the clerk to do nothing but take the charter and place it on the next council agenda, they would have said that. And interestingly enough, I said that without actually seeing it. But if you look at Exhibit 5 of Mr. Katz's, what's labeled Katz v. Clerk 53 at the bottom, and there's section, well, move back a little bit if you do, to Page 52 is the beginning of a complaint, if a citizen elector files a complaint, and then subsection B talks about the action by the town. And it says it right there. He's trying to confuse you with the stuff in the middle of the paragraph, which is after there is a hearing by the review board or the town administrator to look at it. The old process was just what I said. The town clerk shall place the complaint on the next town council agenda. That's what the old charter said. There is no discretion there. Place the complaint on the next agenda. The charter was amended, so that the clerk has a role to find out if it's sufficiently set forth. And if the clerk didn't have that role, then why make those changes? If Mr. Katz is correct, then this language from the 1990s should never have been removed, because it says it right there. Shall place it on the next town council agenda. But no, the current charter does, in fact, provide a role for the clerk. And if you want to talk about knowingly, let's get to the fact that back in November, both Mr. Katz and Donna Cook thought the clerk had a role to investigate. You've already seen the email from Mr. Katz, which I believe is one of his exhibits and also Exhibit A, and the very complaint of Mrs. Cook, which is in there as well, her last line is, "I am requesting an investigation and hearing into the violation of the town charter." So at the time, both of these people thought that an investigation was warranted. It was only when the investigation didn't go the way they wanted that they suddenly decided that no investigation was called for. So that, in a nutshell, is the first thing. I think, and in fact, well, we're not in a court, so I wouldn't, if we were in a court, at this point, I'd move for a directed verdict just based on Exhibit 5 as presented here, because I think it's pretty clear. But we're in a political process here, with a small P, and let's just proceed further. The second point, continuing on with that point, if you notice the current language of the charter, yes, sufficiently set forth is in quotations, but on the bottom of the second-numbered 1, this is Page 32 of the charter, and it's, as I said, there's an A, 1, and a 2, and then there's another paragraph, and there's another 1, 2, 3. And one talks about if the town clerk determines that the charges are sufficiently set forth. The last sentence of that paragraph- The last sentence of that paragraph states, "If the town clerk fails to find that the charges are sufficiently set forth, he or she shall notify the complainant in writing, providing the reasons for dismissal." Again, if "sufficiently set forth" was so simple that it required no action, then why would there be a reason to provide the reasons for dismissal if you didn't go forward with it? And even further, if you look at sub-paragraph 3 under that very same section, "If the complaint is against the town clerk, the town administrator shall fulfill the duties of town clerk regarding review of the charges and scheduling of the public hearing as presented above." A review of the charges, again, the language indicates that there is judgment applied by the clerk in the performance of her duty. Or else it would say what it did in the 1990s. The clerk shall place it on the agenda. It wouldn't have five paragraphs of language there. Then the second issue is, did the clerk conduct a sufficient investigation? And that's what we are prepared to show tonight. I think it's already been shown by some of the exhibits that Mr. Katz has introduced and that you've already had in the complaint, the fact that she did go around to the schools right after a hurricane, acted quickly, talked to the superintendent, went through all that. And we are fully prepared to show that she conducted a valid investigation. Moreover, she came back before the council and reported the results of that investigation in public and invited further evidence from anyone, including a council member, who did not come forward prior, at that time, or afterwards. So she absolutely did more than her duty. She fulfilled her duty to see if this complaint was sufficiently set forth and then invite further information, none of which was forthcoming, which led to the dismissal of the complaint. And even here today, I would say, if there is other evidence, it should be coming forth in that form. We should not really be wasting the time about this issue, which is pretty clear in the language, and we should be dealing with the underlying thing if there is an underlying issue. So I guess I'm actually going to ask at this point, and I think it's what Mr. Katz was asking for a completely bifurcated hearing, but I think I might ask for a decision, and obviously, Mr. Oliverio will advise you what his recommendation is. But I'd ask you for a decision at this point, the fact that the question of the investigation, and based on particularly Exhibit 5 and the changes to the charter, that there is some investigatory role, or the charter would not have been changed from the previous language. And I'd ask for, I'd move for a decision on that part of the question at this point.
I would object that, I would expect my closing on that part to be available to me.
I think that Mr. Tice, as we did with Mr. Katz, should proceed with the testimony, and then this body can deliberate on all the issues that are presented before it. So I just assume, get the evidence on the record, and then we can deliberate. That's my recommendation.
And I agree. We should consider the entire matter and then decide.
Then I would call Nancy Mello as a witness and ask that she be sworn in.
May I ask, should Mr. Tice have at some point been sworn in?
Pardon me?
Should Mr. Tice have at some point been sworn in?
No, I'm not providing any testimony.
No, he's presenting, Ms. Mello, he's not a witness.
He's effectively acted one in some cases.
No, 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 he's an advocate.
Ms. Mello, could you tell us your position?
In no way did I know.
No, no, what is your elected position?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a South Florida, and I have been since 2004.
Okay. And in that time, have you handled any other charter complaints to your recollection, to the best of your recollection?
The complaint against the treasurer was Michael Burke and Mrs. Cook's complaint. That's the only two I've handled.
And with Mr. Burke's complaint, could you just tell a little bit, tell us a little bit about what that was about, the substance matter? It's already in one of Mr. Katz's exhibit, but if you could just tell the board.
Mr. Burke had filed a complaint because the treasurer was no longer living in Tiverton. I had received notification through the Board of Canvassers that there had been a voter registration change. I had spoken to Mr. Di Matteo a couple of times about it. In fact, at one point in my office, and the solicitor was present, he told me, yes, he was living in Middletown. He had changed, he was no longer an elector of the town of Tiverton. We had several conversations over it, and I explained to him that, you know, that would have to go to the council, and he was well aware that it was going to council.
Okay. And Mrs. Mello, during this time, you performed an investigation, in other words, correct?
Absolutely.
That included?
Dealing with the Board of Canvassers to see what their official records were. The State Board of Canvassers, correct?
Yes.
Or State Board of Elections, or what was it, who was it, Middletown Board of Canvassers?
The Middletown Board of Canvassers and our own Board of Canvassers.
Okay. And you talked to Mr. Di Matteo as well?
A few times.
Yes, okay. At any point during this, did anyone suggest that this was not appropriate for you to be investigating?
No.
And subsequent to your informing Mr. Di Matteo that you were going to refer it to the town council for a hearing, did Mr. Matteo resign?
Yes.
So that was the end of it at that point?
He resigned, and Mr. Burke withdrew his complaint.
Okay. Now, the current complaint, could you take us to October 29th, which I believe was a Monday in October? And you got a complaint from Donna Cook. Could you tell us about that, what you recall of receiving that complaint?
Let's see, as I recall, she brought the complaint into the office, and I'm not sure if I was there when she originally brought it in, but there was a complaint. She said she had been, I did speak with her, she had been to Fort Barton School, and the secretary had some pins on her desk that she was aware of at the time. She thought it might have been a school committee member that put the pins there, but she wasn't sure. And she wanted something, she wanted action taken on it. She wanted something done about it. And at that point, it was a Friday afternoon, I believe, so I was unable to do anything at that point. And then I went to Fort Barton School on the Wednesday following with the hurricane, and I think that's already.
Okay, just to clarify, October 29th was a Monday?
It was a Monday.
And that was the day that Hurricane Sandy was predicted, is that correct?
Right, right, there was no school.
Okay. And this is clocked in on October 29th at 10:16 a.m.?
Right, she must come into the town hall on the Monday then, because we clock everything immediately when they.
Okay. And then we had a hurricane. We had Hurricane Sandy, the hurricane of the century, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll ask the town council to take judicial notice of the severity of Hurricane Sandy. And when did you next take action then, after the hurricane? Was it the first thing that you did?
I want to say that the school was also closed on the Tuesday. So I went to the school on October 31st, I remember, because it was Halloween, and the secretary was festively dressed. I went to Fort Barton School around 9:30 in the morning. I walked into the school, the secretary addressed me. I asked her if she had any political, any pins on her desk, political pins on her desk. She said she did, she looked under some papers, and she found one. I asked her if she realized that that was a political action group and that she should not have the pins. She did not give me the pin. She immediately threw it into the trash. She said she didn't know, she didn't realize, and she threw it in the trash immediately.
But before you go in, I just want to clarify something. You're referring to it as a pin that's sometimes referred to as a button. This was a button that had a pin on the back that one could pin onto their clothes, and so we're using the term pin and button interchangeably, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, go on, please.
I never actually handled the pin or button, whatever we want to call it, but, because she immediately threw it into her trash.
Okay. And just for the record, the secretary you talked to was Lexi Souza, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then what did you do?
I told her I would have to speak to the principal. Could I speak to the principal? The principal was not in her office, so I waited. A parent came along, I just, had some child coming into school late, I just waited on the side. And then eventually, Mrs. Wardell, the principal, came in. I went into a, I think it's a little conference room, and I explained to Mrs. Wardell that we had received a charter complaint about pins on the secretary's desk at Fort Barton. She told me she was unaware, she would talk to Mr. Souzer. I explained to Mrs. Wardell that I was going to have to also speak to the superintendent because I wanted to make sure that they were not at other schools. I then left Fort Barton School with every intent to make the rounds to all the schools. The next one on my route was Picassett School. I went in there, I spoke to the secretary there. She had never seen any pins and had no knowledge of any pins in the school. I spoke to Mrs. Blais, the principal there. She had the same comments. She had never seen any, she did not have any. While I was talking to Mrs. Blais, the superintendent called. I assumed it was because I had told Mrs. Wardell I was going to speak to the superintendent. So I told Mrs. Blais, well, I'll speak to him here. I did speak to Mr. Rierick. I don't remember word for word what we said, but the gist of it was, he was going to send out an email to all his administration and that he realized it wasn't allowed, he couldn't handle, I believe there was some comments about if someone was wearing a pin in the high school, he wouldn't be able to control it, but he was going to get the message out. So I asked him to please send the copy, and I came back to the town hall. There was no need to go any further. It would have just been my time wasted going further. The superintendent was going to handle it at that point.
Well, you, did you also receive a copy from the superintendent of the policy that the school department had on political activities that he was sending around, that he sent around to people again?
I did. I got a copy of the policy on political materials in school and a copy of the email that he sent to his principals.
So...
At that point, I was satisfied that the superintendent was taking care of it because my real mission in doing all this was to get the pins removed. We were a week before an election, and action had to be taken. I don't know who else would have taken that action.
Just coming back to when you first talked to the secretary at Fort Barton, Ms. Lexi Souza, did she ever indicate that she knew what this Tiverton First button was about?
No, she in fact said she had no idea what it was. And she also told me she had no idea who put it there.
I see. Well, you've seen what's been marked as Exhibit A, your exchange of emails with Mr. Katz from November 5th.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Katz indicated that Mr. Nelson was in possession of a recording. Did you have any conversations with Mr. Nelson specifically about that?
No, I had conversations with Mr. Nelson for council business, and we had a council meeting with him, but I never, he never raised that issue, nor did I.
And did you provide the council, the sitting council at that time, with a copy of the charter complaint for their information?
I don't think so. I don't remember whether I did or not.
Not by November 5th, but you did provide them with a...
Not by November 5th, but yes, I did.
You did provide it. So Mr. Nelson received in his hand a copy of the complaint against you at some point?
Well, it was in his packet.
It was in his packet, okay.
I assume.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. November 5th, the election was November 8th, so he wouldn't have received a packet with that in it.
Okay.
Right, so he would not have been, it would have been the current council that received it.
Okay. But you saw Mr. Nelson several times, and Mr. Katz has indicated that Mr. Nelson on November 5th knew about this issue.
I have seen Mr. Nelson even since this new complaint has come out, and he has not ever mentioned to me that he had any tape.
Okay.
And also, I want to make the point that Mr. Katz made reference to the fact that, oh, I stopped and didn't go on to Ranger, and he knew. This email from him is dated November 5th. My visit to the schools was on October 31st. There would not have been pins there for me to go and see after this email.
And just, I just want to clarify though, neither Mr. Katz nor Mr. Nelson have ever provided you with any copy of this tape or...
Nor Mrs. Cook, but she did make reference to the fact that she had it.
Mrs. Cook referred that she had the tape, but she did not provide it to you?
Right, because when I sent my decision letter to Mrs. Cook, I also hand-delivered her one to her home on the Wednesday before the council agenda. It was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I hand-delivered it to her home. She told me at that point that she had just received, I don't know if it was a copy of it, or if it was the actual, I don't know, but she had just received it. I made every effort for her to bring, I told her it was going on the council agenda, for her to bring the tape or get the person who did that to come in, as well as she continually made reference that there were other people that she knew, her friends or such, that had them. And I made, again, reference, I specifically remember saying, get all your ducks in a row, bring everything in, but it's going to be on the council agenda anyway, they will hear that. Bring in or have the people come with other complaints. She said she did not have anyone. We had numerous conversations. She'd had no one that would come forward with any evidence, and specifically stated Mr. Nelson would not come forward.
Ms. Mello, I just want to get this into the record because I'm not sure it's in any of the other documents, but is this a copy of the letter that you wrote to Donna Cook dated November 19th?
Yes.
C, Exhibit C.
It may well be in there, but I don't want to take the chance that it's not. Oh, if there's an extra one, that would be for Mr. Katz, sorry. Where is Donna Cook's complaint? Anywhere? Right, maybe here, here, okay. I just want to ask you. Now, Ms. Mello, according to Exhibit 2, contains as its first page labeled Katz v. Clerk 15, the original complaint letter from Donna Cook to you, is that correct? Now, just for the record, this copy doesn't have her signature or the received Town of Tiverton, October 29th, 10:16 a.m. stamp, but it is the same letter?
Yes, it's the letter I received here that's signed.
Okay, fine.
What exhibit is this in?
It is 2, it's the first page of Exhibit 2. And I just want to go to, you obviously conducted your investigation, but if you were looking at the sufficiency of the complaint, I direct your attention to the sentence in the middle of the page that says, "I'm filing a citizen complaint regarding this violation." Did Donna Cook anywhere say in here whom she was actually filing the complaint against as far as an individual? as far as an individual?
No, she only made reference to me when she spoke to me of the secretary.
Okay.
May I object? Is that allowed?
You can object if, to the question.
I object, Mr. Teich is changing the terms of the charter, which say it doesn't have to be an individual. He's leading a witness to an answer he wants.
Maybe, can you rephrase the question, Mr. Teich?
Okay, well, I just...
But you just asked the question without...
Sure, sure. Does the letter of Donna Cook of October 29th make a complaint against any individual?
Objection, that's my objection. The charter doesn't specify individual. He's leading a witness.
No, that's, that's an open-ended question. I think that's, he can ask that question. He's going to make argument that...
Right, I'm about to get to the next one, anyway.
Yeah, go ahead. You can answer that.
No, it says the buttons were on the secretary's desk, and the school department was in violation.
Okay. That was my next question that I'm getting to, which I think would have solved Mr. Katz's objection, anyway. In the first paragraph at the end, it says, "The school department is in violation of the Tiverton Town Charter," right? Is that what it says?
Yes.
So you would have had to have made some investigation to determine who in the school department was involved, is that correct? Or you were going to investigate, you would have to investigate every single employee of the school department? Every teacher, every staff person?
No.
You'd have to conduct an investigation, in fact, to determine who was in the school department was in violation, correct?
If it was against the whole school department, yes.
Yes. And you'd also have to determine if it was a policy of the school department, if it was the department as a whole, is that correct? Which would mean you'd have to conduct an investigation? You have to answer, not just nod your head.
Yes.
All right. And finally, just confirming again, on the bottom, the last line does say, "I'm requesting an investigation," does it not?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Mrs. Mello, I would just ask you to just speak up just a little louder.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. I have no further questions of this witness at this time.
Mr. Katz? Mr. Katz, you can cross-examine.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Mello, do you have any legal training?
No.
No. Did you ever wonder whether you had the authority to conduct an investigation?
No.
So you never looked into whether there was any evidence in the precedent or anything like that that would authorize you to conduct an investigation?
No, I saw it as my duty to get as much information together. You're calling it investigation, yes. I had, I felt it was my duty to get all the investigative, all the information I could together.
Okay. Did you ever look for precedent allowing you to dismiss a complaint on the merits or rising to the level?
I only had one precedent of myself, and that was the complaint against Mr. Burke, and I followed the exact same procedure.
Regarding that, did your letter passing along Mr. Burke's complaint to the Town Council, did it describe the findings of your investigation, or make a statement that it rose to the level of the charter?
Oh, I haven't read it all through. I couldn't tell you that.
Why don't you take a look at it?
Okay.
Which exhibit is that, Mr. Katz?
That would be Exhibit 3, the last...
Yeah, that one doesn't have a number. I received it after I had numbered my pages.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, my response in January 14th says that I felt it was sufficiently set forth.
But does it, did you, does it say anything about investigation or finding merit, or that it rises to the level of a charter complaint?
No, I didn't use the same terms.
Okay. So you're suggesting that sufficiently set forth is equivalent to a finding of merit?
No, I'm suggesting that in Mr. Burke's case, it was a major issue, and I'm suggesting that on Mrs. Cook's, it wasn't enough information to get to that level.
Okay. But the, the letter doesn't talk about the investigation or finding of merit?
No, that one didn't.
Okay. When you discussed this matter with Mr. Di Matteo, was that before or after Mr. Burke submitted his complaint?
I might have spoke to him before and after.
So in part, your investigation was conducted before the complaint was filed?
Part of it would have been because through the Board of Canvas, I would have, that's how I received notification. When he registered at the DMV, they send notification to the Board of Canvas.
Okay.
So, yes, I might have spoken to him before and after.
And in Mrs. Cook's complaint, why did you go to Fort Barton School? For what purpose?
Because she specifically states in her complaint that it was on the secretary's desk at Fort Barton.
And you went there to investigate?
And I went there to make sure there were no pins on there, and make sure they were removed during an election, and yes, find out whatever information I could there.
To investigate the complaint. So when you found the pin, what did you do with it?
I didn't touch the pin. Mrs. Souza found it herself under her own papers on her desk, said, oh, yes, I have it here. I told her, well, you shouldn't be having that, and she immediately threw it in her trash. I never touched the pin.
So when you told the Town Council on November 26th that she handed you one, that was incorrect?
She presented it to me, I should have said, but I did not take the pin.
Okay. And I'll refer you to, in that same exhibit, the next letter after that transcript of that meeting, this is the letter from Suzette Wardell, the principal. In the first paragraph...
Objection to the use of the word transcript. It's not a transcript.
Okay, the, all right. That document that I am calling the transcript, after that. In the letter from Mrs. Wardell, it says that you and she walked into her office and closed the door. You told her that there was a charter violation filed against the political buttons on Mrs. Souza's desk. Then you showed her the Tiverton First button. Is she incorrect that the order that that happened?
I saw that when you put it in as one of your exhibits, and, no, she probably doesn't remember. I didn't have the button. I have never touched the button.
Okay, so, so your statement to the Town Council that you held the button, and that statement from the principal?
I didn't say I held the button. I did say that she handed it, but what she really did was present it. She said, it's right here, and I also said she immediately threw it in the trash, so I obviously didn't get it, if she immediately threw it in the trash.
Did you consider that button evidence in your investigation?
I did. The fact that I saw a button there, yes, I did, and I...
And you didn't think that you should collect evidence for your investigation?
I saw the button that was, and I stated it as seeing a button.
But you allowed it to be discarded and effectively destroyed?
Whatever she did with it, I only needed to see it.
In that case, when, when you were at Pecassett School and you spoke with Superintendent Rierick, and effectively, as you just stated, handed, he, there was no reason for you to continue the investigation because he was going to take care of it. Did you convey to him that he had to report back to you and provide you with the buttons, or was there any conversation in that regard?
No, no. When I spoke to Mr. Rierick, and he said he was going to get an email out to his administrators, he was going to make sure no one had pins, I saw no reason to go any further. By the time I would go anywhere else, I'm sure the emails would have been gone, so I stopped at that point.
So you didn't ask him to, you concluded your investigation at that point?
I concluded at that point.
And you didn't ask him to provide you with any evidence at other schools that he might find?
In his email to me, there is reference from the middle school that says they had nothing there, no.
But you didn't ask him...
At the time, I didn't know of Ranger School that you...
But you said you were going around at all the schools. I'm asking because if, for example, if you had found 10 buttons at all the other schools, would that have risen to the level of a complaint, maybe?
If I had found 10 buttons at all the other schools, I would have so documented it and so presented it. And I don't know, I would have had to think about it at that point.
But at that point...
I didn't find 10, so it's...
But you only went to two schools out of the five and ten?
I went to two, with the intent that I was going to all of them, and then saw no reason after that point of talking to the superintendent. I think he's capable of handling it at that point.
But handling it to conduct the investigation or to discard the evidence?
To send out the message that there should not be any political pins on anyone's desk.
All right. When did you ask Mrs. Cook to bring Mr. Nelson forward, or bring forward any other evidence, as you just stated?
I asked her to bring forward any other evidence several times.
Well, when did she tell you about Mr. Nelson, and you said, well, get him to come forward?
She told me about Mr. Nelson on the day I went to her house to hand-deliver the decision. I didn't want the newspapers getting it before Mrs. Cook had, you know, had received the response. And she told me she had just got it. She told me it was cloudy. She told me she, there's a desk and a door or something, but the video was not clear, and that, and I said, then you're going to have to get, try to transcribe what the video, the audio part was, and she said even that was muffled, and she wasn't going to be able to do anything.
But you requested that information from her after you had dismissed the complaint, and were delivering that dismissal letter?
I told her at that point that this was on the Monday council meeting, that she should bring forth those people, and she would have to get someone, if she had other pins and they were seen somewhere, to bring someone forward.
But you had already dismissed her complaint. That would have had to been for another complaint, is that correct?
Of course, that's information after, after I wrote the...
So you didn't request that video from her before you dismissed the complaint? That's all I'm asking.
I wouldn't have known she had the video.
You stated that you, you and Mr. Teich stated that you invited people to come forward. Was that, was that invitation at that November 26 meeting before or after you dismissed the complaint?
My letter of dismissing the complaint was on the November 26 meeting, so it would have been a...
Right, and that's when you invited for more evidence?
Oh, no. I told Mrs. Cook directly to bring evidence, anything she had. Specifically said, get your ducks in a row if you have other evidence, if you have, if Mr. Nelson has this tape, you've got to get him to come.
But you didn't, you didn't invite Mr. Nelson to do it, or, well, you just said that Mr. Nelson, you'd invited her to give you Mr. Nelson's video after you had dismissed the complaint. I'm just trying to establish the timeline here.
After I handed her her copy.
Of the dismissal letter?
It was going to be, yes.
Okay.
It was going to be on the Monday council agenda.
So by that invitation, it was already dismissed? I'll move on, I just want to establish that. In Mrs. Cook's letter, the very last sentence before respectfully, what is, what is that, could you read that sentence for me?
What letter are we talking about?
Mrs. Cook's letter to Mrs. Mello filing the complaint.
About October 29th?
Yep.
First page of Exhibit 2.
Says, "I'm requesting an invitation in hearing into the violation of the town charter."
Okay, does it ask, is it requesting it of you or just in general?
It's, that's exactly what it says, just what I read.
So it's not requesting that you conduct investigation, just that one be conducted?
Objection. The exhibit speaks for itself.
Yes. Move on, Mr. Katz.
All right. That's all I have.
You can ask questions. You can ask questions. Does any member of the council have any questions for Ms. Mello?
Nancy, this letter that I'm reading, it's addressed to you. It says, "Dear Mrs. Mello," and, and the last sentence is, "I'm requesting an investigation and hearing into violation of the town charter." Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Just a question, Nancy, what are the duties of the clerk of the Board of Canvassers?
What are the duties of the clerk of the Board of Canvas? Exactly as I am the clerk of the council, I am the clerk of the Board of Canvas. That doesn't, I mean, they're not...
Do you have any additional responsibilities as far as elections go, or any role that you have to play as far as Board of, through the Board of Elections or the Board of Canvassers?
Yes. I have a whole lot of responsibilities on that. But on the, for instance, on, as the clerk, I am essentially have to run those elections, but it is the Board of Canvas that has the say on everything. I'm their clerk, the same as I'm the clerk of the Town Council.
Okay, so would you say that this gathering information, you were gathering information for the Town Council, the complaint, or additionally, as far as Board of Canvassers is concerned, you were gathering information for the Board of Canvas?
Are you talking about Mr. Burke's complaint on Mr. Di Matteo? Are you talking about Mrs. Cook's complaint?
Mrs. Cook's.
No, I wasn't gathering information for the Board of Canvas. I think you, didn't have anything to do with that.
Anybody else? Mr. Teich, have any other evidence or witnesses?
Yeah, could you have a moment, a brief recess, maybe?
Absolutely. We'll take a...